Karina? I see. Would you like to do that? Or would you like me to do that? Or would you like someone else to do that?
I was actually just gonna ask, um, I was, if any of the above is fine. I was actually just gonna ask if, um, Cara, were you gonna share the screen?
Um, I had, what did you want me to share?
That PowerPoint? Or would you like, would you like one of us to do that?
Um, you can.
Okay.
Hey, Karina, before we go, can we just quickly go around and introduce ourselves? There's a couple people here that I'm not sure that I know how they're connected to these. Um, I'll introduce myself. I'm Amy Konstant. I serve on the board and chair this committee. Cara?
I am Cara Pacha, and I am the executive assistant for the board.
Just jump in, people.
Lorna, Fast Buffalo Horse, Director of Multiple Pathways to Graduation.
I'm Nettie Leggers. I'm a student success manager in multiple pathways and help lead the prep project.
I'm Jared, Executive Director at Mouse Scott Learning Center.
Jenny Stackhouse, Executive Director of the Portland Village School.
Jenny Brayden, Charter School, um, Office Assistant.
Tara O'Neill, Director of the Program Director of the Charter Schools for PPS.
I'm Erica Stavis. I am a program administrator for contract at alternative schools.
Shuka Raisboni, the Executive Director of La Monda Mersion.
Hi, I'm Sunita Santos. I'm the administrator at the Emerson School.
Jeff Lafayette, College Manager at Portland Community College.
Nathaniel, are you there? I think we have our student representative to the board, Nathaniel Schuh, with us in some way, shape, or form. Anybody else?
Roseanne Powell, Board Manager.
And Michael Con, the Principal at the Dart Schools.
And I'm Max Whitehouse, Assistant Principal for Dart.
Sorry, yes, I am Nathaniel, student of the board.
Great.
And I'm Joe Ferguson. I teach science and career and technical ed at Alliance High School at Meek, and I'm a part-time instructional coach.
Yeah, Scott Bailey, Board Member and member of the committee.
I'm Margaret Calvert, Regional Superintendent for High Schools and Multiple Pathways to Graduation.
All right, I think that might be everybody.
And I'm Karina Wolf, the Area Senior Director for Multiple Pathways to Graduation. Is Kayla here?
I'm not sure. She said she could come. She was on her way home from hybrid and was hopefully gonna be on by 4:30. So she should be here soon.
Okay, perfect. We'll introduce her when she comes. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then thank you, Lorna, for sharing your screen. And then if we go to the next. Thank you. So just an overview of today, just in response to what the committee had asked to speak about today, is overview of our Dart schools, um, an update, an overview of our prep project, some review of how we evaluate our contracted alternative schools annually, um, a kind of review and update on our multiple pathways cohort-wide supports, and then just celebrations.
Amen to that. Graduates.
Yeah. And we will, I know that some, that board members have another commitment at six, so we will be ending at 5:50. That's our, that's our go time for wrapping up. So now to your question, Amy, if whoever would, if we, I'm curious if we have a volunteer who would like to read it, or if you were Director Konstant, whatever you prefer.
Nathaniel, would you like to read this? Can you see the screen? Nathaniel might be in now. "We gather today on the stolen lands of the Multnomah, Kalapuea, Chinook, Clackamas, Cowlets, Malala, Cathlament, Toowalatin peoples, among others. An estimated 90% of our region's original Native people were killed by violence and disease. Those who survived were forcibly removed from the land they inhabited from time immemorial and now reside in one of Oregon's nine federally recognized tribes or in non-reservation Native communities in the state. We share this information with humility and with respect for the land and its inhabitants' past, present, and future, including the approximately 2,174 Native students in Portland Public Schools." And I think we would be remiss if we read this today without thinking about the conversations that are taking place in the state of Washington about the history of Native people forced into government schools and the terrible practices and extermination that took place in those supposedly educational settings. So with a heavy heart, we revisit that history."
Thank you for that, Director Konstant. And I appreciate Lorna, Fast Buffalo Horse, for riding that land acknowledgement. So our first topic today is to hearing about our day and residential treatment schools. And so our day and residential treatment schools are what they're called, Dart schools. And the students, a couple years ago, and staff renamed, they chose for Dart to mean discovering and rising together. So you will hear both if you visit Dart schools. And if we go next slide. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Michael Con, Principal Michael Con, and Assistant Principal Max Whitehouse to tell us a little bit about Dart.
All right. Thanks, Karina. So my name is Michael Con. I'm the current principal, but I'm also the outgoing principal of the Dart schools. And so I look forward to sharing with everybody currently what we're doing. But yeah. So just to give you a sense, our funding is slightly different than a lot of the programs in PPS. We're long-term care and treatment funded, which means that we are separate contracts that are funded directly through ODE. And so every couple of years, we come up and there's an RF, there's an RFQ, and all the things that we have to go through to get our programs in there. A lot of the funding is based on student enrollment. So as our numbers go up, so does our funding. And as our numbers go down typically, so does our funding. But that happens every couple of years. So a little bit different than what you get at typical schools. Are the student population that we, we serve, there's a couple of ways students come to us. One, through DHS placements. Another is through OIA placements. And then also, we have direct placements at times by families and sometimes by school districts, depending upon the program. Our hospital level of care, which is through Trillium Family Services, typically comes through medical providers and DHS. So, and we serve, the mental health education partnerships we have include Trillium Family Services, which we serve Perry Center and Edwards. Morrison Child Family Services, which is our Breakthrough and Counterpoint programs. Life Works is a day treatment, which is our Nickerson program. And then our Janus Youth Program and our Boys and Girls Aid programs, which are served at Clinton School currently. But we'll be moving to Kenton over the summer.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Max. You're good.
I was gonna give just a little more info about each campus and the types of students we serve. So Perry Edwards is a day treatment facility. We have K-12. We have four classrooms there. And often, the students are coming out of the Perry Residential Treatment. So it's a step-down place, not always, but it is often stepped down from Perry Res. Perry Res has, like Michael said, the hospital setting for the Secure Child Impatient Program. They also, the older classrooms often support young people who, for sixth through 12th grade, who are struggling with anxiety, depression, often a danger to themselves or others. And they, you know, the length of stay varies. The younger kids are there a little bit longer, and the older kids are there for just a couple of weeks, sometimes depending on insurance reasons. And then Sage is our program. It's another part of Morrison Child and Family Services. It's a residential treatment. We serve sixth through 12th graders. They're generally students who identify as female. Sometimes there are students who identify as non-binary, and they are victims of federal sex trafficking. The Clinton Day Treatment School serves two treatment agencies, Janus Youth Program and Boys and Girls Aid, and they are different group home type settings that provide treatment and wraparound services for sixth through 12th graders. The kids from Boys and Girls Aid are often foster kids. And the Amani House is the other program through Janus. And they serve, they serve young people who are, they are trying to break the cycle of sexual violence. And it's a program that really supports young people in learning new strategies and supports to help them get back into their home settings. Oftentimes, they do go back home when they finish the program. It's a really great, successful program that we have there, sometimes with us all four years of high school. And Breakthrough is a day treatment program, OIA, Oregon Youth Authority. It's a drug and alcohol program. The students there live in proctor homes, part of Morrison Child and Family Services. Counterpoint Day Treatment is very similar to Amani House, and those young people live in proctor homes instead of a group home. I mean, it's another long-term program. And then finally, we have Nickerson, which is a day treatment school. Sometimes they have as young as fourth grade. And that is our one place where there sometimes are school placements from the district. If there's no other good place for them to go to get the services they need for mental health care, they go to Nickerson. But most of the time, it's a, it's a family placement. And all of these programs, the students that go there, they are only our students because they are part of these programs. We often get a lot of questions from principals and other folks saying, "I have this, this kid at my school who would really benefit from one of your Dart programs. How can I get them there?" And we only can take them if they are actually placed into one of our student programs. So that's the overview.
So thanks, thank you both, Michael and Max. I guess I'd like, I'd just like to pause for a second and ask if there's any questions for any of us, or any feedback or reflections on Dart.
So are all or most of these programs fully subscribed? And do we have more students who need and could benefit from these settings than we're able to accommodate there?
Currently, it's been a struggle to actually have our programs completely full because of the challenges with, there's a variety of different challenges. COVID has presented so many different things in terms of even staffing for our partners and being able to find people to operate that. So currently, our numbers are pretty low, but they're low across the state. So it's not unique to the PPS. You know, there's always a need. And I think, you know, in terms of school district placements, I think Nickerson is a place that PPS utilizes a lot. I would say at any given point within Trillium, about 35% of the students that are served either at Edwards or Perry Center, about 35% of them are PPS students who live in the county. And so that's, it's definitely an area of need. But currently, our numbers are, I would say, are down across.
I would say that part of, one of the impacts that we also see is we see the impact of health insurance, health, and Max, maybe you want to speak to this, but of students getting discharged quicker than sometimes we would hope.
Yeah, sometimes we'll get, we'll get notification, you know, after we've had a kid for two weeks, we'll get a notification, "This, this child is discharging tomorrow." And it's often because of the insurance, you know, specifically with the residential treatment, inpatient is very expensive. And the treatment there is, is good. They get a lot of support. They participate in family treatment. And on paper, according to the insurance companies, there's often, it looks like, you know, they're doing great, they're, they're stable, they can go home now. And what we know is that two weeks is not long enough for somebody to stabilize. And so it's, it's helpful when insurance will pay for day treatment so they can step down and get the services, especially because we provide the education at both sites so the teachers can create some continuity for the kids at school.
Yeah, it is important to know that our, our services for education really are, it's, it's a therapeutic setting first, right? So we're really based around the treatment needs of the students. So if, you know, our school day is a little bit different in terms of how long students are with us because at each site, it just depends on when they may have treatment groups. And so it does make for, you know, some unique challenges when it comes to actually scheduling, to make sure we're adhering to ODE requirements, but at the same time, being good partners with our agencies to try to meet the various needs of kids.
So let me ask Amy's excellent question from a different angle. Because I think what I'm hearing is that the need is there, but it's the, all the funding crap that gets in the way of more, more students that need being enrolled in these programs and then being enrolled in our educational program. Is that not eloquent, but better statement of?
Yeah. I would say that the, you know, DHS and OIA utilize the programs quite a bit. And so that there is, there's, there's space. And when we're really operating, prior to COVID, I would say the majority of our, our spots were full. When COVID happened, because of the variety of different challenges around processes and procedures and being residential care facilities and facility that are bringing students in and out, it really, when we have outbreaks, which we've had COVID, we have to look at a reduce in numbers and how do we keep students out and how we keep them safe in the facilities? So yes, the need is, the need statewide for mental health services for students is humongous. And there is, there is endless amounts of students who could access that. How they access that, partly through their insurance piece is one way. Another way is through DHS placements and then also the OIA spots. So it's not all, a lot of the insurance providers, you know, that's really kind of the Perry Center and Trillium. But the other ones, if you look at some of the other programs, it's gonna be whether or not OIA has students, but DHS has students. And, and can, can we actually end up supporting them and keeping people safe in COVID? I mean, that's, that's where we've seen our numbers go down significantly is because of that. But again, that's not unique. PPS runs, we have more day and residential treatments than any other district across the state. So we have students that come from all over the state of Oregon who receive services from us. And that need is high. That need is very high.
And, and Michael or Max, and also Karina, I'd like to hear from both your perspectives. Does it, do we feel like our PPS counselors and administrators are well-connected to the Dart programming so that they sort of understand the services that are available to kids when, when kids might need to make a transition?
Do you want me to take that, Karina? Do you?
I can, I can start. I think there's work to do. I, I think, I think there's work to do. And I think that Dart, that some people are very familiar with Dart, Dart's schools and programs. And there are other people in our district or places in our district where, where that's not the case. And so, and so, and so we could, we could certainly do a better job. Kind of circling back to Director Bailey's question is, I think one of the things that we all know when we look at child welfare and how we take care of students and children, is what is the opportunity, what is the opportunity that our state has to look at things differently so you don't have to have your kids go into care to get the mental health services they need? And I think that sometimes that is what the system, when the systems don't talk to each other or don't talk to each other as well as they could, that, that's some of the outcome. So when, so when Michael and Max talk about OIA is a good system that we're really, that we're very connected to Oregon Youth Authority or Department of Human Services Child Welfare and Self-Sufficiency, but child welfare and, and having those relationships. But I think it's this whole other piece of work around, when you're parenting kids with big mental health issues and their kids are really struggling, how are we, not just as a school, as a school district, but how are we as a larger, broader community taking care of our students that have mental health issues? And I think we have a lot of, there's a lot of room for improvement there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think part of the challenge with PPS administration knowing is that, you know, these are not spots that PPS places students into. So a lot of times, they don't know about the services because it's not something that can be accessed through your continuum of services within PPS. It's really gonna come through a different avenue, through the DHS, OIA, and through the insurance. It's, we let the, the schools know when a student is with us. But when we discharge and the transition, when they get ready to leave, it's probably the time when people, when they receive a student back from a Dart program, where they learn a lot about it. And they, they want to know, where has the student been? And we tell them, and then we have the opportunity to explain to them what that setting looks like as they transition back into their district so that the district then can make a decision within their continuum of where they feel like is, they can best serve the student, whether that's in multiple pathways programs. If they have an IEP, what's the continuum of services placement for a student? So they really get to know the programs when they have a student kind of discharging from us and going back. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I just wanna take one minute to just thank both Michael and Max. Michael did just share that he's the outgoing principal, and he's been there for two years and just done an amazing job. And so really, really grateful to all of the systems and work that Michael and Max have together, been just a fantastic administrative team at Dart. So thank you both. And I also just want to say, you know, our work in Dart schools is one of the things, as an employee of Portland Public Schools, that I'm most proud of. The fact that we have a school that serves young women that have been sexually trafficked is, is meeting the moment. And it's, it's unfortunate that it's necessary, but it's, it's, it's really wonderful that, that that's part of our portfolio of Dart schools. So there's a lot of good work going on in, in our Dart schools. So even within our multiple pathways to graduation umbrella, sometimes the Dart students and the Dart schools are least talked about. So I appreciate you, Director Konstant, Director Bailey, and Director DePass, asking to get some information on the Dart schools because I think it's important that we keep, we keep these students in, in our minds' eye as well.
Absolutely. And Michael and Max, while we have you here. So the purpose of this committee is to really inform the board and often, you know, create new, uh, create a forum for, to discuss potential policy changes and advocate for budget changes. So while, while we've got you, please feel free to share anything that you think, you know, needs to be fixed or could be addressed at the policy level or from a budgeting perspective, things that intersect with our responsibilities and the governance realm.
Yeah, I, I think it's really important that, you know, PPS has made a commitment to mental health services and has been pretty outspoken about that on the news and the things that we communicate to the public. And I think it's really important that, that PPS recognize that they, they are responsible for the services of some of the largest mental health treatment, residential and day treatments in the state. And really owning that piece of it, that our teachers are PPS teachers. We work alongside some amazing staff from the agencies. And, and really keeping in mind that if PPS's commitment is to, to providing a continuum of mental health services, that within that is Dart. Even though the kids in the district may not be able to access that, we still serve about 30, 30, 35% of our students come from PPS and will return back to PPS. So how do we ensure that, that there's good communication and that people recognize the work that's being done and recognize the work of our agencies and acknowledging that, you know, they're up against some financial burdens as well? And how do we, as good district partners, work alongside them to, to help with some of those costs that, that they may do? Because it's, it's hard work. It takes a tremendous commitment from everybody, and it takes a commitment from everybody in PPS, from every, you know, everybody across the board. So we just appreciate the opportunity to be here and, and share that with you. And happy to answer any questions that you have going forwards. Send us an email if you, you think of something later.
Thank you. And I'll just put a little bug in your ear. Another area where we potentially can be helpful is that we create a board advocacy agenda for legislative advocacy. So to the extent that you see impediments statewide level, you know, elevate that to us as we build our advocacy agenda.
That's great.
Yeah, I think that's really important because we see, every year, we see cuts to the state budget for long-term care and treatment. And so we're, we're operating on, you know, like 75% of total cost. And every year, we have to cut staff because we don't get full funding from the state. So advocacy is really essential because, you know, we need, even though we have small class sizes, a class of 10 kids in Dart needs a lot more support and needs a lot more staff. And so, you know, having to constantly shuffle people around and, and cut staff because of this, our funding is being cut from the statewide level, it's really, it's really hard. It's hard on the staff. We have teachers who have been in Dart for 30 years, teaching in Dart, because they love working with the kids and they love what they do. And every year, they see more and more people have to be unassigned and moved around. So it's challenging work. So thank you for the advocacy.
And, and has Dart received SIA funding? In investment account? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next topic is a really exciting topic. And that is, we often talk about the practices within multiple pathways to graduation and what we, how we focus in our work to be very student-centered. And so that has really culminated, when we look at what are the best practices that we do within our cohort of schools and programs, it really culminated with us looking at data and reviewing data and applying for and being awarded a federal grant. And so now we're in year four, and we have lots of information to share about that. And so I'm excited to, to introduce Lorna, Fast Buffalo Horse, our Director of Multiple Pathways, and Nettie Ledgers, our Project Student Success Manager of the Prep Project, and Joe Ferguson, one of our teachers, and then at some point, Kayla Ford, one of our students. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to Lorna.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. As you can see, PREP is an acronym for Personalized Relevant Engaged for Post-Secondary Project. The $3.9 million grant was one of just a handful that were awarded nationally and one of even fewer that really focuses on alternative education students or students who've been out of school. Sorry, I thought Karina was motioning me.
No, I was just gonna say, we were one. We were one of, the only one.
Got it. Okay, I thought so, but I didn't want to brag too much. So some of the elements of the PREP are project-based learning, social-emotional learning with a kind of a culturally sustaining elements to it, and CTE, which we know for all students is very positive intervention. But we have been braiding these three interventions in the PREP project in unique ways that we're very proud of. So some of the, the research that we were kind of looking at before we applied for the PREP grant, that we included in our narrative, is really around push and pull factors. What are the reasons that students become disengaged from school, at risk of leaving school early before graduation and then, in some cases, leaving? We know that push factors include just a lack of engaging curriculum for students, kind of a cultural incongruence for students who are minoritized in our society and may not be represented well in the curriculum or instructional methods, a lack of a sense of belonging. We know that exclusionary discipline is a push factor, and we know that students behind in credits are all. And we know that students behind in credits are all push factors that push kids out of school. We also know that students have, um, complicated lives and sometimes their lives pull them out of school. They might need to work. They might need, they might need to parent. They might, um, have social, emotional, physical or mental health issues, either them or their family or just adverse life experiences. So the PREP model of braiding those three, um, strategies is really designed to reengage students, um, who have been pushed out or pulled out through that project-based learning, um, CTE, social emotional learning, really integrating those three in many cases.
And so Lorna, those strategies are, we're applying those strategies across all settings?
So the PREP project started out, um, in just three places. So, um, initially we were at the two Alliance campuses and MLC. And then, um, in the third year, we added Rosemary Anderson Lentz Campus. We're also now in the process of adding Rosemary Anderson North and Next Year Dart. So it's really a, a model of kind of, you know, starting small and expanding and replicating. And we hope to continue replicating with another phase of the grant, which I think Nettie is going to talk about. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Yes, thanks. And what's the, what, what's the timeframe of the grant?
It's a five-year grant and we're in year four. And it's called an initial, we're in the, what's called an, if this is called an initial phase grant. And so there is a mid-phase and there's, there are many opportunities that we are very much wanting to take advantage of. Um, okay, so this is just a little bit more about the theory of action. Um, you know, really taking some of those authentic and, um, hands-on, um, project experiences for students, weaving them with, um, social emotional learning, really, um, paying attention to culturally sustaining practice and really weaving in CTE. Um, our theory of action is if we do that well, then PREP will become the driver of opportunity to improve collaboration and coherence among multiple pathway schools and programs. And we have so many, um, great examples of projects that have done that integration of all three, um, legs of that stool that, um, if some of the other people tonight don't share some of those examples, I will jump back in and do so because they are great, but I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. So, um, just, you know, to conclude my part, we just, um, really believe that this approach is positively impacting, um, the ability of students to engage in their education. It's shown through their attendance, their persistence, completion, achievement. And we believe that we are graduating students at higher rates, ready for college and career. And I think that the next person on is Nettie.
Thank you, Lorna. And I realize I didn't ask before, um, do I have the power to move the slides or will someone move them for me?
I'll, I'll move them for you, Nettie.
Great, thanks, Lorna. Okay, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity. Um, so as Lorna described, student engagement is really the big idea, uh, behind PREP. And what's innovative about PREP is not, you know, any of these individual components. Um, CTE has been around for decades, uh, project-based learning almost as long. SEL is, uh, social emotional learning is kind of the new kid on the block, uh, more or less. But thank goodness we're, uh, paying attention to that. But what's innovative about this, and I think what enabled us to be awarded the early phase grant, um, what is the holistic integration of these strategies, uh, with, with really, um, an understanding that everyone in the building owns all of these. And, uh, that, that it's our job to weave them together to, to, uh, keep students in the center and student engagement as our goal. Um, Lorna already spoke to a little bit, uh, the schools that were, uh, involved in the pilot and, uh, bringing on Rosemary Anderson Lentz this year. Uh, and we, um, are serving over a thousand students. We've served over a thousand students, uh, through the initial pilot phase. And go ahead and go to the next slide. So we're really exceeding, um, our targets for serving students. Uh, and we're also on track, as Lorna mentioned, uh, with our replication goals. Um, one thing I wanted to add, uh, is that in addition to kind of replicating outside, and we may have, if we are awarded a mid-phase grant, an opportunity to, you know, uh, reach beyond, uh, uh, PPS and create a little bit of a network, um, of alternative programs that are working these same strategies, uh, throughout Multnomah County. So that's something I wanted to, to raise. Um, but the other point I wanted to make is that PREP, uh, has been, its profile has been getting, uh, higher in the district. And, um, we've really been advancing some system shifts within PPS that are called for within our vision. Uh, the PREP framework for project-based learning is the basis for a district-wide framework that was drafted last year by a PBL work group that I served on, um, and continues to be iterated. Uh, PREP, uh, is at the table with the culturally sustaining work group, the Career Pathways Pilot that's funded through the CTE Innovation Grant, uh, and also Middle School Redesign. Um, so I, it's been really exciting to be kind of in MPG at this time and leading this vanguard for innovation within PPS. Go ahead to the next slide. So I wanted to briefly update you just on progress on each of the components of PREP. Um, for CTE, we've established three new programs of study, uh, in two schools that had no T CTE programs before PREP. Uh, so now we have an education and communications programs of study at Metropolitan Learning Center and a design and applied arts program at Alliance at Benson. And for those of you who are listening, who might not be sure what a program of study is, um, it's an opportunity, a pathway for students to earn certification in a high-wage, high-growth industry. Some students can earn college credit and it really lays a strong foundation for the next step. Uh, as Lorna pointed out, uh, in terms of graduating from high school and, uh, going on to college, an apprenticeship or directly into the workforce. And it is not a trivial undertaking for schools to, uh, stand up a, uh, program of study. Teachers have to be certified in CTE. There's course development that has to happen. Um, there's equipment, state approval. It's, it's a process. And we've had a lot of support from the CTE department in, uh, PPS. And, um, yeah, just to stand up three programs and over just a couple of years is, is a remarkable achievement. Uh, and PREP's also been increasing capacity to provide a range of, uh, career-connected learning experiences. One of the things in the early phase, uh, grant we have is the luxury of kind of learning. And what we're learning is that, uh, CTE programs of study, formal programs of study for all kids is probably not going to happen. Um, so we're really paying a lot of attention to, uh, bolstering the, uh, wider range of career-connected learning opportunities that are available. Go ahead to the next slide. So social emotional learning, the biggest investment of the PREP grant, grant is social emotional learning. The grant provides for a full-time social worker in each of the sites. Uh, that social worker helps create and lead, uh, SEL team that's tasked with establishing really a comprehensive approach to SEL that includes school-wide culture and practice and, uh, targeted and intensive supports and interventions. And I really can't overstate the importance of having trained staff whose job it is to do this work, um, in the buildings. We know that from research and experience that a close relationship with just one caring adult and ideally a network of adults, that even just one adult can make a huge difference in whether a young person stays engaged in school. Um, but we also know that adults in schools are typically neither trained, equipped nor resourced to tend to the mental, social, emotional wellness of students of each other, uh, and even of themselves. Um, and if there was anything that the last year has, uh, has shown us is that, um, this caring community is absolutely essential to being able to really get through hard times. Um, and we've gotten some great support on all of these fronts, uh, this spring from Dr. Dina Simmons. Uh, Dr. Simmons is a leading voice in equity and social emotional learning. Uh, she's the founder of Liberate Ed, a national collective focused on the intersection of SEL and racial justice and healing. Uh, and you can learn more about her. Uh, we spotlighted her work on the PREP website. Uh, and I'll share the link to that with you at the end of this presentation. Next slide. So the third leg of PREP is project-based learning. And this is really where we see the students and the teachers coming alive over the last few years. Uh, and I want you to imagine project-based learning as the, the leg of this three-legged stool that is painted bright spring green. Um, kind of like the color of the shirt I have on today. It's just really, uh, a vibrant practice that has taken root and is growing. Um, you might've learned about some of the projects from PREP's first pilot year, uh, which was twenty eighteen, nineteen. One of the highest-profile ones was the Field Guide to fungi of Opal Creek. Um, the link, uh, on the slide here will take you to a nice article that unpacks magic of this project. We also have the magician on this call, one of them, uh, Joe Ferguson, who's on the line. And, uh, we also did a number of other projects that year. And mind you, that was the very first pilot year. So, um, it, it was really, uh, quite remarkable. Go ahead to the next slide. Um, so the second year, the second pilot year, we also had a number of projects underway, uh, when the pandemic sent everybody home. But teachers and students and community partners, um, didn't stop. They actually adapted to keep a number of these projects going remotely. And I'm really pleased to share that I'm going to be moderating a panel later this month at the National Youth Employment Commission's All Youth Connecting Forum, um, to talk about this experience of being applied and virtual at the same time and how, uh, we were able to adapt to the virtual environment. Uh, and the panel's going to include our student Kayla Ford, um, who we hope will be able to join us if she hasn't already, uh, and Joe Ferguson. And then also two community partners. This is another thing that we've seen really growing is teachers, uh, reaching out to community partners and bringing them in to support student learning. Uh, we have Jackie Santa Lucia, who's going to be joining us on the panel from Your Street, Your Voice. Um, and Peter Crim from the Wind and Oar Boat School. Uh, I, has Kayla had a chance to join us? I wanted to see if she?
She has not. Joe is.
Okay, well, Joe, you are here. Um, and I could, I know one anecdote, uh, that Kayla has shared, but why don't I turn this over to you and just ask you, you know, what was this like to, uh, adapt these projects to, um, the virtual environment and just in general, what has project-based learning, uh, uh, done to teaching and learning at MEAC and student engagement?
Thank you, Nettie, Karina and Lorna for inviting me. Um, I was hoping Kayla could join us too. We were in hybrid together and I'm like, do you want to do this panel at four thirty? Like, I think I can make it. So hopefully so pop on. Um, uh, sorry if this is choppy. I'm out at, I'm getting set up for a soccer practice. I got a couple of middle school recs, soccer teams getting set up for practice. But, um, yeah, project-based learning has been a game changer. I mean, the level of student engagement, seeing that we are doing real-world projects with community partners, um, building sailboats for clients, uh, writing field guides at the professional level for nonprofits like Opal Creek Ancient Forest Center. It's just, it really brings the learning to life for these kids. The PREP grant has just been so incredible at allowing teachers to really bring these opportunities to kids and work with the, um, community partners at this deep level. Um, and yeah, transitioning to online was tough. Um, but, you know, one thing that we did with Wind and Oar, those guys are just incredible, is we're able to develop some scale model boat kits that kids could actually build, um, at home. Um, and then that worked out pretty well, you know, it's not the same thing as building a fourteen-foot yacht. But, um, you know, still pretty cool. Um, and then this year what I was able to do, cause, uh, you know, I know they mentioned the CTE component too. I had the natural resources CTE program at Alliance at MEAC. Um, and I was able to purchase some trail cams and work with the folks at the Columbia Slough Watershed Council to do a really neat, like wildlife study. Um, and then also bring in some language arts components in that, working with my colleague Alex Reynolds. Did all the really cool, um, like kind of nature and storytelling, um, course. Um, the one we're teaching right now is called Migration Stories and we're learning about, um, bird migration and movement, human migration and movement. Um, kids are doing some really fantastic projects and we're able to help out a really cool, um, uh, local group, the, like I said, the Columbia Slough Watershed Council. So, you know, it hasn't stopped us. It's, it's, it's made us pivot a little bit, but I think that's what's neat about the PREP plan is it gets us to think creatively about ways to engage kids at these really neat, deeper levels. And it's just been really fun.
Yeah, thanks so much, Joe. I really appreciate your leadership in this too. Joe has just been such a spark plug, uh, and a leader and it's, it's, it's been infectious. Um, literally, I have another slide of all the projects that teachers have initiated this year, uh, continuing under comprehensive distance learning. And, um, I didn't include it because I, it would make us go over time for this section to be able to talk about all of those. I will say that, uh, Lorna and I, uh, today joined, uh, students' final presentation in, uh, a class called Matthew Factoring, um, that, uh, was launched this, this spring. And for this class, a math and CTE construction teacher, teachers, uh, so Miguel Mejia and Jerry Eaton partnered with Your Street, Your Voice, um, which for those of you who hadn't heard about it, is a program that engages youth in learning how to use architecture and design, uh, as tools, not just to build stuff, but, uh, as tools to promote racial justice. And, uh, the student project was to design tiny houses, um, to help address Portland's affordable housing issue. And it was just fascinating to learn how they applied, uh, learned about and applied trauma-informed and equity frameworks to their designs, understood how values are embedded in design. And, um, also, uh, through, you know, the, through the budgeting process and also the, the measuring and everything that, they applied math to a real-world problem that they really care about. And it was just delightful to see a student at the end, um, I think this is right, Lorna, you wrote in the chat, "This project made math fun." And the math teacher wrote back and said, "Math, that's the way math should always be." So it was just a, a fun experience to be able to sit in on that. Um, thanks again, Joe. If we can go ahead to the next slide.
Hey, I have a quick question and maybe this is for you, Joe, but, um, just hearing about all this fabulous project-based learning. I'm wondering if, um, we've, any of you involved with the PREP grant have, have been part of the, um, design and planning for the MPG building? And for getting input?
Yeah, that's a great question. You set us up. That was a good one. Oh, yeah. So, um, we were able to work with, uh, the folks at Elsa and Your Street, Your Voice. And we actually designed a class where kids were working directly with the architects and engineers of the MPG building to have their specific cultural identities reflected in the building or that new building. It was incredible. And then again, the final presentations were like off the hook. The kids were super excited. I mean, Kayla could talk about it too if she was here. I don't know if she's made it on yet, but, um, but yeah, it was, it was really cool. And one of those projects where you're like, yeah, we want, you know, you, you can see yourself in this building. You know, they won't actually be able to go there because they'll be graduated by then, but the, the kids that come after them will, 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 uh, they'll be honored by that, uh, their, their input into the design process.
Well, and then also, as I'm sure you- Well, and then also, as I'm sure you know, during the construction process, part of our contract is that the prime contractor creates student experiences and, you know, ways to integrate some of the construction and construction management issues into the curriculum. So, you know, you guys, you guys make sure your voices are heard and what you really want that to look like, because there's a fair degree of flexibility there. So make sure you remain, you know, connected to your contractor and figure out what those student experiences should look like.
That is great. So I think that next, we have just a little bit of data that we want to share with you and then, and then open it up for, for questions and answers.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Karina. Thanks for that question. It is really fun to hear from the students who are, like, working on designing their schools, like, green roofs and the whole, the whole thing. Yeah, so with innovation projects, there's always a risk, right? That we could make things worse because we've never done this before. And fortunately, that does not appear to be the case in this case of implementing PrEP. Graduation outcomes for PrEP are really our North Star. And the most immediate, you know, evidence of, not the most immediate, but what shows up in the dashboard of success. And we're seeing good news in these upward trends at Alliance High School. The different lines that you're seeing here have to do with students who are representing the four-year cohort graduation rate in the green line. And then we have the rate for CTE participants in the yellow line and the concentrators, the ones who are really completing and completing a program of study. So it's exciting to see that increasing, and this is at Alliance High School. We can go to the next slide.
Could I just make one little addition to this part of the presentation? So we have seen that the students who are coming to schools like Alliance in MPG have not changed. We're still having students who are entering sophomore, junior, sometimes senior year, behind in credits, sometimes a year or more behind. And so for that reason, we've always had a lower four-year cohort graduation rate. But really, during our PrEP years, and then, you know, thanks to Measure 98 and SIA and other supports, we've seen that we've really been able to push that about 37 points. So it's exciting. Same kids doing much better graduating within four and then even five years.
Can we just pause for a second there? And that's amazing.
Yeah, it is. It is amazing. And, and as is the next slide.
Yeah, so here, we're seeing a reversal of a downward trend. And Karina may have more comments on this, but it's nice to see that, you know, coming up. Go ahead, Karina.
I was just going to say, so this, this mirrors exactly, and there's many factors, right? But this, this mirrors when we added CTE to MLC. So one of the things that we did, and then, and there's two things that are really important for people to know with regard to context. So with regard to context, in 1516, we very intentionally, as a district and within multiple pathways to graduation, made a greater connection between Reconnection Services and Metropolitan Learning Center. So the students that we, that, and looked at, how are we, like we do at Alliance, how are we welcoming students mid-year at MLC? How are we, how are we adding more alternative elements to Metropolitan Learning Center as an alternative school? And so, so as, as they had, their student body has somewhat changed, somewhat stayed the same, and somewhat broadened, which is, which is great and wonderful. And adding CTE, we've really seen those, that trajectory just, just really go up the last couple of years. And we will continue to, we anticipate continuing to see that at both campuses again this year. So I just want to say that, that for the schools for which we have data, it, it is, as Nettie said, it's really, it's really wonderful that the data is showing this. And to Lorna's point, I just want to make two points. We're seeing two things happen. We're seeing more students graduate and more students graduate in four years. And both of those are different data points, and both of those are really important. Because we know that kids in ALTA, they're not all going to be CTE completers because by the time they come to any specific school in multiple pathways, they may not necessarily be there two full years, to take two full years of CTE or two full years of a CTE track. So we're really mindful of how important CTE is. And we know our community of learners that, that we don't anticipate seeing as high level of CTE completers, per se, as we do in some of the other schools. And the other thing is just the numbers, the more kids graduating, we all know that whether that happens in four years or five years or six years, when we, our goal is high school completion and a transition to post-secondary or ready for career. And so it's, while, while the, while the slide focused on four years and four years is important, we know in ALTA, it's, it's one of many data points that are important. And our job is really, how do we give kids the skills to launch them into adulthood? So PrEP is just so, illuminates that so well in so many ways.
Great. Thanks, Karina.
So, Nettie, I just want to say, your, your previous comment about your involvement in moving the whole district really makes sense because I think you're ahead of the rest of the district in a lot of things that we've been talking about for a lot of years around engagement, project-based learning, SEL, CTE. And you're the ones who are, like, actually doing it coherently. So this, this all makes sense. How about that?
Thanks, Director Bailey, for reflecting that back. I, I think we do feel like we're, you know, alternative schools for a long, long time have been viewed as, you know, the schools of last resort and for those kids. And I think what we are able to do through this project is to lead the way and really kind of show what it takes to really succeed with every kid. And, you know, my own kid dropped out of high school. This is the greatest irony of my life, 30 years in secondary school improvement. And, and, but, you know, she was not a good fit for a big-box high school. And thank goodness that there was an alternative program that was able to support her to graduation and beyond. So, yeah, I agree. And I think this is very exciting. And I think it's very exciting that the district has a vision in place that actually calls for most of these strategies to be, to be bolstered and centered and, yeah, grown. Thank you. Well, let's bring this down the homestretch. I know there's more on the agenda. Just in sum, PrEP is this holistic integration that we've talked about and that Director Bailey just sort of described very well. And, but it's also a community, a learning community. We learn together across sites through a number of professional development and PLC routines and opportunities. And, and then within each building, really focus on building community around, you know, what's equitable, what's just, and really by design, centers students of color and historically underserved students and their families. And then finally, you know, PrEP is part of this broader movement that we were just talking about, to remove barriers, engage young people, and enlivening learning experiences. And it's aligned with the PPS vision and longstanding national and global work in secondary redesign. So it just feels like it resonates, and we're on the right path. I think, oh, yeah, I wanted to, with a caveat that these are both works in progress, invite you all to visit the PrEP website and the community Google site, which is just for the PPS educators, to learn more about this, this exciting project. And it's pps.net backslash PrEP.
So can you guys give us a sense of the, the next steps in terms of the application process for the next round of PrEP grant? I can't imagine that they wouldn't want us to continue with this fabulous and highly effective work. How does that happen?
So, yeah, we're, we're working with Talon Spitz right now to get executive-level approval to apply for the mid-phase. We're applying a year early. We have a fifth year of the current grant to go. So, but I think that programmatically, we're ready to do that. What may get in the way are some of the evidence standards that we need to meet through our independent evaluation. And the EIR program not only provides funding for, but also requires that we contract with an independent evaluator to execute a quasi-experimental study that will meet the What Works Clearinghouse standards of evidence. And, you know, we didn't administer math last year, and we didn't administer it this year. And attendance is interesting. And so, but everybody else is in the same boat. And the other way we can meet the evidence standard is through extant research. And we do think that there's quite a good bit of research on CTE and PBL and emerging in SEL. So anyway, we're going to go for it if we, you know, get the approval from the district. And, and I think that, you know, in terms of support, one thing that I would love is, is just, you know, the willingness of Portland Public Schools as the largest school system in the state and the, you know, leader in the region to, around alternative education, to kind of be open to this project embracing schools across Multnomah County and in Coquettius County initially, potentially more. You know, so long as the grant and the project sort of remain within Portland Public Schools. So it's kind of support for building a network.
Scott, I'm guessing that it's safe to say that they can count, they can consider that they have the support of our Board, Charter, and Alternative Program Committee for taking the PrEP, PrEP grant process to the next, next phase.
Absolutely. And it's been great to see this early, early in the presentation that the kind of dime dropped in my memory of visiting Alliance when I first got on the board and seeing the orientation, learning about the orientation, which I think was, for new students, that was part of PrEP. And so now, it's like, oh, yeah, I know a bit about this. But now to see it really built out a couple of years later is, is really amazing. It's just awesome work by your staff.
Yeah, I think Dr. Lorna Fass Buffalo's force's leadership at Alliance at the time was essential and...
You think she had something to do with it?
Maybe at least a little bit.
Okay, well, Amy, let's, let's get our newbies, incoming board members, on a visit, if we can. Or will that have to wait till the fall? They, they should immediately pick up what's going on at Alliance.
Absolutely.
Anyway, we'll, we'll figure that out offline.
I, I just want to add that I think one of the things that's really, this has really been really exciting. And like we've said on the slides, and I think multiple people have said, is, is that our, the way we would design when we wrote the grant was to include DART schools. It was to include our CBO, our Community Alternative Schools, our CBO schools. And so we're really able to really kind of hone our practice the first couple of years and really work on those things. And now it's, it's a really exciting time, also to taking it to different communities of learners. So, so it feels, that part feels really good as we're getting more and more schools and more and more students then impacted, and more and more teachers excited about, about their practice. So, and a lot of, a lot of good leadership. So Bonnie Hopson, the current principal of Alliance, is not here. And Mark Van Hummison, the current principal of MLC, is not here. And they both have been working really hard as well.
Thank you so much, PrEP team. It's great to, to touch back in with that and keep in touch. And Karina, I want to move us along so that we have just a few minutes to go through the evaluation process for our contracted alternative schools, just so we can check in and see where we are with that, if there have been any changes to that, and clue us in on the timeline as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to, you might have already jumped off, but I just want to thank Joe Ferguson for jumping in as a teacher also. And thank you to Nettie for all her leadership in leading this work. It's, it's much appreciated and very, very visible. So now we're switching, switching gears. And so some of the questions that, that we have received, we wanted to respond to, which is, how do we evaluate our contracted alternative schools? And what's the process for our annual evaluation of contracted alternative schools? And so at this point, I'll turn it over to Erica Stavis.
Karina, it's kind of hard to follow up on that last presentation, I have to say. It was so well-rounded. And as, you know, being a participant in the PrEP leadership team, it's kind of nice to, like, hear that summary report when you're, like, more in the weeds. I'm like, wow, this is really great. You kind of forget sometimes all the impact it has. So thanks for that. No, I wanted to touch briefly on our evaluation and contract cycle for our CBO schools. As you are aware, this year, we finished, completed an RFP process, which occurs every five years for our contracted alternative schools. All of the programs that we have an intent to award to, all the programs that we're currently contracting with had received an intent to award. And so we're currently in the process of negotiating contracts for the next five years. And they're a five-year contract with annual renewals. So it's just kind of important to understand that context. And here, you know, we just outlined our kind of board obligation in terms of what we're required to do as a district, as we do work with these contracted alternative school partners. And so we have to maintain learning situations that are flexible with regard to environment, time, structure, and pedagogy. And we have to establish standards for private education programs to make sure that it's safe. It's a well-rounded instructional program and provides students with the opportunity to make progress towards graduation. And so, next few slides, please go forward. Kind of talk very briefly, an overview of kind of the processes that we have in place. So our evaluation cycle includes a variety of different elements. And, I'm sorry, bear with me. Somebody is ringing my doorbell. I'm going to ignore that. It includes a variety of different components that include everything from academic and programming and student progress to compliance with district. Hold on one second.
So I can, I can pick that up?
I have a solicitor, but I told my daughter to tell him, please, please. Also includes making sure that all of our organizations that we contract with meet all the compliance and district and state statutes. And as you're aware, there's specific... It also, there are specific statutes that relate to private alternative schooling in the state. And so we follow all of that guidance. And then, of course, fiscal and management overview. This is kind of a broad graphic that we have that describes the various components of our alternative accountability framework. And as you can see, it includes some performance goals and standards, as well as goal setting. We have a formal site review process that takes place every year. And we provide reports to those schools after visiting. And of course, this is standalone site reviews, but we're doing ongoing investigation of schools throughout the year, visiting schools, talking with leaders. We have, because of COVID this year, it's been, this aspect of COVID has been a blessing in that we've been able to meet much more regularly as a CBO network of leaders. So we meet twice a month to talk about a variety of different things. We also have a set of annual deliverables that we collect, beginning of year and end of year. And so these are some of our more compliance-driven measures that we have in place to ensure that everything from the fact that they have a defibrillator onsite to... that everything from the fact that they have a defibrillator onsite to things like they're auditing their synergy to make sure that period attendance is accurate. And so it's a mix of different things, a number of instructional hours, a whole bevy of different things. Then, of course, we work with them on school improvement planning and other aspects of their goal setting that aligns with, you know, their own goals and also matches our district's goals. And so this just kind of is an overview of how this framework works. You know, that calendar is meant to be kind of a standing point for new leaders. We have a new contractors to kind of understand the overarching accountability that we have for our contracted schools. And then, of course, like we mentioned, different checkpoints for different schools where there might be issues that we are feeling we need to dig deeper into. Currently, we're in our spring phase. This year, we have been a little bit delayed due to, you know, COVID. But we have completed almost all of our site reviews at this point. We have one more school in which we're doing a more in-depth site review with, not because of any reason, just because of scheduling snafus. And currently putting together the reports. We have an alternative accountability, sorry, can you go back one slide? So we have a alternative accountability report card, which is something that our own SPP department puts together after validating with our contracted partners. And this includes a variety of different metrics, which we measure each year in terms of student performance, school culture, and climate. Each school gets one and then we have one for the broader CBO network. And, you know, they, you, we use information in synergy and then also the panorama survey and a variety of different things. So it includes demographics as well as outcomes. And currently, we're obviously in contract negotiations. We will have some documents actually coming your way this month, at the end of the month, for our contracted alternative school contracts. And I think we have you on the docket for the June 29th board approval. So we're in the process of getting those all ready by the timeline in order to submit for your approval.
So Erica and Karina, when we have those contract renewals that come to the board with organizations that have already been serving our students, can we make sure that we get past accountability report cards included as background when that information comes to the board?
Absolutely. We are happy to do that. And and I just, I'm going to repeat what Erica and I think Nettie just said earlier, which is, given the pandemic, we weren't able to complete MAPs. We were able to pre-test but not post-test last year, and then we weren't able to do that this year. So we will certainly give you past years and what we have with an asterisk around adjustments we've had to make for the pandemic.
Same, same as we had for our charter schools.
Yep. Yes, and Amy, we also put a little caveat on the report card itself, just saying some of the data might be impacted by, you know, school site closures. This way, it's there permanently on the report card as well. It's hard to think that anybody will forget, you know, this year, but in 20 years from now, when there's all new people, it'll be good to add on there, too. All right, next slide. So we do actually, on the report cards, have a few different data points. The report cards do point to a plethora of different details, but we just highlighted a few things. So we have, this is for 1920, so the previous year. We usually start doing the report cards around December or January of the following year because we need the year to close and all kinds of other state reporting to be completed before we kind of have the data for our schools. So it's more of a look back at the previous year, similar to a state report card. So for 1920, we have the racial breakdown of the CBO population, keeping in mind that this does not include Helen's View School because they're not in our instance of synergy. So it's a little bit more cumbersome to put data reports together. However, this is a breakdown and, of course, this is our overall CBO population. And I believe in 1920, there were about 17, I think, 16 to 1700 students served throughout the school year across our CBO network. And so, you know, any one of our schools might look very different in terms of a racial breakdown, but this is across our entire network. And then, once again, with students with identified disabilities, we have 23% who have an IEP. Keep in mind at that range, this is our overall population, but our range, some of our schools have anywhere as low as 15% and some have as high as 45% of their individual school, you know, student population that received special education services.
Hey, Erica, the first slice of the pie on the left.
Yes.
Is is that indigenous students? It's not labeled. There's like 38 students, the dark blue.
Ooh, yes, yes. Sorry about that. Thank you for that clarification and I can update the slideshow to make sure that chart is updated. All right, next slide.
This this is my work life.
Oh, don't, I mean, I could go all day when it comes to graphics. Ask anybody on my team. I, this is the more fun part of my job. I actually have a computer art background, so when I get to utilize any of my infographic skills, I get very excited. Here is also, when I talked about, we have a summary report for 1920. Here are some of the numbers for that year, which I think are really promising and exciting, keeping in mind, once again, the population of students served by our CBO schools. So, you know, each of these is defined more specifically on the report card with more detailed metrics. But the one-year grad rate, so students who are eligible for graduation who graduate within that year, 89% of students who were eligible to graduate in that year graduated. Average daily attendance, so these are students who had, 85% average daily attendance at the school was 79%. Growth in daily attendance, which we felt was, of course, a very important metrics because many of these students have been disengaged previously, 72% of them have shown an increase in attendance. Now, that could be a student who went from 10% to 20%. It could be a student who went from 80% to 90%, but that growth metrics is really important to look at. So this is the percentage of students who showed a growth in attendance, which is effectively one of the reasons why, one of the many reasons in why we contract with these alternative programs, to provide a more engaging setting so that students do engage more. And then in terms of annual retention, 83% of the students who were enrolled at one point in the year were, you know, kept with the district, maybe not in that specific school setting, but were retained within the district. So 83% of the students were retained, which is, once again, one of the biggest strategies that our contracted alternative schools help us with.
Do you guys know how that average daily attendance figure compares to our district overall figure?
It's different. Well, we can find out. And so there's been, you know, there's been discussion, we've been actually in conversations about revising the report card a little bit because it really was designed, you know, about five, many years ago and involved a variety of different stakeholders. And we're actually working now with the new dashboard that's being created to try and develop more live reports for some of these metrics as opposed to just being a standalone from the previous year, being able to measure some of these things throughout the year. And so one of the things that we've been discussing is like, what is the right metric to use for alternative schools? And how is it, we do want to compare to our comprehensive schools, of course, but also realizing we serve a completely different population of students. And so how can we tailor the report card to give us that information for both of those things? Karina?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just mindful of time. And so I know that, I know that we wanted to stop and let, let board members have a moment to transition to to their next meeting. But I do want to say we're happy to take any questions and we're happy to take any questions right now. We're happy to take any questions via email or in the future, too. So don't, this is an important conversation and I don't mean to cut it short, but I'm mindful of, but I'm just acknowledging the time.
No, I really appreciate this because, you know, we, of course, the contracts come to the board for approval, but we didn't have, I didn't have a lot of clarity about the evaluation process. So I think moving forward, we'll, we'll make sure that those are a little bit better connected because we do have great data to show and it's important for the board to see that.
Great. And then next slide, please. And then the the last topic is, there were some questions. Thank you so much, Erica. Just want to say thank you for all the work. Our last topic is just multiple pathways cohort-wide support. So there were some questions around what are the supports that multiple pathways receives as a cohort or what are the support school-wide that our schools receive? And so I just jotted down a few of them. This is not probably a complete list, but just some of the things that that in answer to some of the questions that we received. So credit recovery supports, this summer, we're using Esther dollars and offering services both in the in the CBOs as well as in our summer scholars. So a lot of credit recovery supports. We have student success and mental health supports. So Amy, we work, we work very closely with Amy Rona and James Loveland. And when they talk about providing mental health supports or culturally culturally congruent mental health supports to different schools, our, our multiple pathway schools are included in the in that. And they're, as that continues to grow, I, those conversations are continuing to grow. So that's a piece that we're excited about, as well as, again, I just said, summer scholars. And then college coordination. So in our, in our Measure 98, in our Measure 98 funding, one of the things that has been identified is looking at two things, is a credit recovery support. So having somebody in multiple path, a position and look at how are we working with contracted alternative schools and multiple pathways around credit recovery and what are the specific needs in our schools? As well as another, another resource around college coordination. And so another position that'll be with Erica, but serving multiple pathways wide, is really looking at that college and career coordination. And so really wanting, so every school, some of our schools, as you know, are very small and so not wanting every school to feel like they have to do all that lift on their own, but trying to get some coordination as a system. So that's a little bit, and I don't know if there's other questions.
I think it would be a good idea for us to revisit this and to really take a look at the Measure 98 and the SIAA dollars. We talked about it a little bit and I got some information from our budget office about, you know, my question was around whether there's equitable distribution of those kind of school-wide supports. But I think we'll put this on hold for now, but it would, it would be good to revisit it and and also have some questions about other areas like athletic support and, you know, all, all aspects of counseling services, not just college counseling.
Great. And also, I know Alliance used to have an issue around Title I. Did that get cleaned up?
So that is going to get cleaned up when we get to the multiple pathways building because the challenge has been, which Director Bailey knows, when having us on two campuses, that the physical address for our Alliance at Benson students is for Benson Polytechnic is the same address as Benson Polytechnic High School. And so that did not get cleaned up because of the way ODE does their definitions. However, when we build multiple pathways building, that will get cleaned up because we will have our own address. And we were also moving to Kenton, to the Kenton Building next year. So the hope is that next year, we can relook at that as well.
I tell you, we invent more ways to get in the way of kids getting what they need than... Okay, we should run.
Yeah, we do need to go. A quick, you want to say a quick?
Thank you.
Congrats. Hang on, Director Bailey, just a sec.
I just want to say, we have kids and I just, being clear that we're a K-12 cohort, that we have a lot of fabulous fifth graders and amazing eighth graders and wonderful high school graduates and GED completers going on to post-secondary. That's it. Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody.
I want to say, please, everybody give me just a moment to thank Director Bailey for serving with us on this committee. This will be our last meeting of the Charter and Alternative Schools Committee. And Scott, I just really appreciate how much of a heart you have for these students and these programs. And you always love doing the school visits and I personally just really appreciate your insights and your deep commitment to these kids.
Thank you. That's, that's, it means a lot.
We're going to miss you. All right, thanks, everybody. Take care. Go Blazers.
Thanks, all.